Well, I think we'll go ahead and start so these people can do their thing. We're gonna call this meeting to order. It's March 7th at 10 o'clock or a little before. Roll call, me, Smiley.
Here.
Hamill.
Here.
And Murphy, here. Number three, approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aight.
Alright. I wasn't here, so.
Right.
Well, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
You didn't have to edit anything, but.
Number four, discussion and possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn on May 5th for National Day of Prayer for the Hope in Church. Okay, Taylor, you're up.
I'm up. Well, National Day of Prayer is on May 5th. It's the annual deal that we deal over here. We would like to use the west end of the courthouse lawn from about noon to 12:30, 12:45. Just kind of have a gathering there and we'll be done after that and off the lawn.
I don't have a problem. I'm making motion that we let Hope in Church use the west end of the courthouse lawn.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Think you're good to go.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, sis.
Number five, discussion and possible action regarding the use of the courthouse lawn for the NWOSU Bahama Breakaway.
I, um, I would like to request use of the lawn for April 22nd, April 21st. We will be having a sand volleyball game, so we request that we will have sand put down in our games. We'll start around 4:00 PM. We would like electricity for our machines. We will also be bringing our own power cords. We will have inflatable obstacle course and challenges. We will need water for our dump tank. We will also bring the butter roast for that. We would like to cook by the small building and we will have cooker brought in. We also bring in porta potties and all of our kids will behave well. We usually bring in pretty good crowd and pick up the trash and everything after we're done and we'll have campus police monitoring as well. And again, we're very thankful that we've been able to do this so many years.
Are you guaranteeing everybody behave well?
No.
You gotta watch some of the courthouse employees.
Right. Right.
Pretty much same things we've always done.
Yeah.
So I move that we accept the, uh, use of the parking lot out here for Bahama Breakaway for NWOSU.
Will you provide the sand?
Yes.
I'll second it.
On favor?
We could see our contract for the sand this year.
Right here, David.
We'll have it there. We'll have it there Wednesday evening.
Perfect. Okay, I appreciate that.
You betcha.
And it has changed the time for you. It usually is from 1:00 to 4:30. We changed it from 4:00 to 7:30.
Oh, okay. Well, we may wait till Thursday morning.
Okay.
Early to bring it in. But it'll lead to either Wednesday or Thursday, Wednesday evening, Thursday morning.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Perfect.
You got a piece of paper handy?
Yes.
David Hamill. That way, if you have anything, just give me a call.
Hamill.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh. Thank you all.
You guys have your say. Thank you.
Number six, discussion only with Heath Hurgey.
You got it?
Regarding the Sundance Wind Project. You're up.
Alright, thank you guys. Clark, I think some of you guys may know Clark. You wanna go ahead and introduce yourself first?
Clark Bixler, I'm the leasing agent for the Sundance project here in Woods County. Kind of running, I think you guys probably know, running from the Morning Star Church area down towards Alene and Cleo Springs. We're in the leasing phase right now. There's roughly 16,000, 17,000 acres under lease right now.
Let's see. I think that's it. I'm Heath Hurgey from Duncan, Oklahoma. My family farms, ranches, Tillman, Jackson County. I don't tell many people this month, I'm the commissioner down there, Predator Joe Dickey, so you know. I'm sorry, I'm not related to you. I'm watching that public sometimes, but, um, I grew up down there. We had cattle operation, live in Norman now with my wife, and I'm the development manager for Trainwind Energy. So we started the project July, and so we've got several other projects in the state, but going really well. Got a lot of interest in it. Brought a map for you guys to kind of look at, so you kind of, the big area that we're...
What are, I mean, just from the Morning Star, are you planning some expansion away from there, northeast, southwest from there?
Within, right now, within about a mile or two north of the Morning Star Church area, that's kind of where our north boundary is right now.
You're, this...
Yes.
All that encompasses your orange.
South of the Freedom shortcut, angling down there. Where do you anticipate crossing 14th?
Uh, probably, I would say, Clark, don't you think, up here, probably in the north edge?
Yeah, right there.
Morning Star Church.
Between Morning Star Church and the Avar Road, right in that area.
It'll get a little hairy with brush and low stuff, so we may have to cross up here somewhere.
So there on Jim Allen, kinda in that area?
Further south.
South.
South of the Avar Road.
Oh, okay, south of, okay. But that's back in there, so you'll go over, over. Are you gonna tie into that, to the OGN, that transmission line?
Yeah, so we, we have two interconnect points, one down here by Cleo, and then this one up here, 138 and 345 that parallel each other. So we're just gonna have two phases.
About there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, exactly. So our big phase will be about 200 megawatts, roughly right in this area, and then the northwest phase will be about 176, and it will be in this very...
So how many units would you be looking at?
So we're looking at a 2-megawatt unit, so there'd be about 130 units.
Golly.
Two, 2-megawatt machines, so 376 is the total megawatts.
What is it?
That's 130 towers?
Uh, roughly. Have you ever thought about that number? I don't know, so it's, but it's 200, so it's 100 and then 76, so 100 and something.
130.
Yeah.
135 or something like that.
Yeah, and the number will never go over that, but it will may come under that.
What's the lifespan of a field like that?
50-plus years.
50-plus.
So size of these 2 megawatt, or whatever you call them, what is that size-wise on those towers? Is that a big one, a little one?
Uh, that's, that's pretty average. Some of the, some of the ones you see are a little bigger that are 3-megawatt turbines.
Okay, 3-megawatt.
But they range from like 1.5. I did this stuff down at Apache, down in Boot Canyon, and they were 1.5 and 1.85. So they kind of range in size. These'll be kind of middle of the road, so they'll be 2-megawatt. Investis machines is what we're looking at.
Okay.
So do you run into much resistance, Clark, with people?
Not a whole lot out here. There hasn't been, no.
People typically are pretty excited about it. It's a long-term.
If I could ask, what, I mean, what kind of a lease compared to an oil lease does that? I mean, how do they set that wind lease up with the landowner? How do you do that?
So the leases are long-term lease agreements, and they are projects typically PPA's or 20-year agreements. So we do a 40-year contract, so we do 20 and 20, so the turbines we expect to be there 50-plus years. And we start out with a development term for roughly seven years where nothing happens, basically. And then when we start operations, then the project starts producing power, and that's when the revenue stream, so they get a royalty per acre if they don't have turbines, or they get a base megawatt. So they get one of, the highest of those three, basically.
Sure, sure.
So it's a long-term, steady revenue stream. They get a guaranteed megawatt even if the wind doesn't blow.
How do, in the state of Oklahoma, or here, now, will we, will our school districts, these school districts, they will...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. What, what is the value of those?
Gross production tax, I'm sure.
No, there isn't any on these.
On wind?
No. But it's ad valorem, though, the value of each turbine.
Right, so the ad valorem tax deal went away, so...
Oh, it did.
When we come online now, we used to have a five-year ad valorem exemption here in Oklahoma, and that, that goes away at the end of this year. So when this project gets built, we will come online and start paying ad valorem immediately.
That's good.
Okay. But it's from production? It's not?
No, it's just when we start operating, we start paying that tax.
Right.
And it's from the units.
I haven't seen the district map, Clark, but I'm guessing probably majority will be one Oka, right? So, I mean, that's probably, I haven't seen the way it's annexed out, but it's gonna be probably take the run of the, of the income will be...
Yeah, it's, it's...
And I don't know, is there a district?
It's all one Oka, uh, well, Alene. You'll get, you'll get some Alene and some Cleo probably comes out into there.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Cause they're one school now, right?
Right.
And there's some kids that probably, uh...
Yes.
What's your workforce look like on projects like this?
Uh, this, this'll be a big one, so you're looking at maybe 20, let's see, 6, 12, maybe 20 full times?
Really?
For, for 40, 50 years. And then construction will be 500 people probably.
For Oka.
For, so the 200 megawatts will take about a year. They'll both take about a year.
So a couple of years or a little more, maybe?
To build, yeah. Nine months. I'm building a project down at Rush Springs right now. Just finished one over, just finished one out in Goodwill. That's one thing I brought for you guys to look at, too, on this past couple of these rounds of the research, and just kind of see what we, what we typically do. This is from Texas County. So that's just kind of a letter that we get, and they're very basic, just that, you know, rural zoning on ag lands, there's, there's nothing, and we get, get one from the counties, and basically, I would say, this project, like those, from those, that are on those letters, take, will take about nine months. So they come together pretty quick, but it takes a lot of manpower, a lot of people, you know, 150 to 200 deployed on 100-megawatt phase. This'll be close to 400, so you can just almost quadruple that. But we may not build, I mean, we may build this phase first and this phase second, or vice versa, so they may not be built at once. But though on that, you got, this is really of interest to you guys. What I'll do, I just finished with Ralph Beard and them down in Grady County, and Mike Lanier and Wendell, we did a road maintenance agreement. And so basically, what we do is we pay for any upgrades that the roads require. We beef them up tremendously because you've seen the loads. They're low belly, heavy.
Right.
So we'll spend however much money it takes for our transportation route. So we'll, I'll be working with all three of you guys to sit down, have the agreement, and we'll look at our transportation route and get your input on which roads and bridges are the best. We'll come in one way, deliver to our lay-down yard, and exit one way. So we will not use any other roads besides the roads that we agree on with you guys. There'll be an exhibit in there which you guys say yes or no, so it's, you guys have a lot of input into it. I'll be working with you guys along the way. We can tailor them about any way you guys want to. We can pay beforehand, we can pay when, when they're finished, you know, and once you guys check off, say, yeah, the road's in better shape than what it was when we got there, which is our hope. But the roads, if you've seen them, we have a project over in Garfield County called Chisholm View. If you've seen them, I mean, they're substantial, very nice roads. We'll do turning radiuses and all that, all within your right of way, and then we'll take those out when we're finished. But the roads are really beautiful, and we'll, like I said, we'll come in and we'll deliver, then we'll go right back out, and then we'll, we can, we've gone them different ways across the state, so.
I'm still back on this tax deal. What, what is each one of these turbines valued at?
A little over $2 million.
Okay.
And so I got some recent numbers, actually, from our financial guys to see what we were up to now from a tax-based perspective in each county across the state of Oklahoma. So my drift sand project in Rush Springs that we just started on a couple of weeks ago, we will be about 24 to 30 million, 25 million, somewhere in there is the average. So that's per meg, for 100 megawatts, it's a 100-megawatt project. Well, this'll be 376 roughly, so this'll be over 75 million base, probably about 100 million base. So it, it's good for, it'll inject a lot of money, and, and, and as I mentioned earlier, the ad valorem deal changed, you know, in Oklahoma.
Right.
We used to have that exemption for five years where we didn't come online for five years, but now we just come online immediately, so, you know.
That's good for the...
I think it's, I think it's good for, for us to do that.
Clark, you need to work on moving north.
When would you start construction on this?
Uh, we will, well, it depends. We're shooting for 2017, so we could start in February, March next year. But we've got potential interest from a lot of off-takers as we speak, utilities and non-unutilities, like, you know, Google, Microsoft-type people, you know, that want a lot of power. We'll do a 20, 25-year PPA, and when we sign that, then we'll commence construction, when we know we have a long-term agreement. Or we'll just continue to develop the project and, you know, put it all together. We've already got a lot of it put together thanks to this guy, so...
Is there any, is there any with those towers? Is there any emergency management type stuff that we have to be aware of?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll be working with you guys along that. We'll, we'll have all that set up with EMS, 911, all the addresses and all that. Well, I'll be working with you guys on that. Emergency manager, your sheriffs, everybody, fire department.
Right.
We get them engaged early so they know where the facilities are, where the ONMs gonna be, where the lay-down yard particularly, construction is probably a bigger, a bigger concern for a lot of people. So we'll be meeting with all of those folks collectively and you guys to make sure that you know what's going on out there, you know, the whole time, and that's a big deal. Safety's a big deal with this because a lot of heavy equipment.
When you hire, like, your 20, 25 full-time people, what kind of special training are they gonna have to have?
So a lot of them are coming out of tech school, and some of these kids...
I know Woodward has a...
Yeah.
Right.
Just like the one in Woodward, they'll come out of that one pretty young. A lot of them are, you know...
So that would probably be something we could sell to the VOTEC, I mean, or to the public schools for kids coming out here next year, so...
So if...
Be a good training program to have.
Because if they wanted to stay around and farm or ranch and have a full-time job with benefits, I mean, they start out making quite a bit of money doing that. If they like good views and like, like to work with their hands and, and like to be technical, you know, if that's what they're, how some kids are just geared that way, you know?
Right.
And the VOTECs, Woodward's a really good one. I think y'all Reno's got one. And so if there's local high school kids that may not wanna move, tosser up home city or whatever and work, you know, they, they might wanna stay here, you know, this'll be a good chance for them to do that. So, and they're very good paying jobs for kids that are coming out. And there's so much demand that they're trying to pluck kids before they even finish school, I mean, finish their technical, it's like a two-year technician deal, but they need them so bad that they just, they're just trying to, they're hungry for, for young help, you know, to keep these things going. So this is a great project. We met with US Fish and Wildlife Service and ODWC a couple of weeks ago in Tulsa. They see it as a very straightforward project. There's a lot of oil and gas, as you guys know, right down in here, a lot of farming and agriculture center pivot, so a lot of it's already been, you know, used by us. So there's not a lot of pristine area out in here, but we've been working with them. They think it's really a good project. We're doing all of our ADN studies and surveys right now to make sure of that, so we get closer construction. We'll be wetland surveys, cultural resources, you know, I'll know all about that with bridges and roads and stuff, so we'll do all that.
Are they short, when you have a tall man, are we going with the short ones?
Uh, they'll be about standard size you typically see. So if you've seen the one over at Breckenridge, over Grant County, it's a mid to the one. I think those are Vestis machines. These'll be Vestis machines, 2-megawatt turbines.
Now, do you guys have the ones over there north and east of Enid, Ponchari, Carrion?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, so that's 235, and we did Breckenridge, which is just east of Enid, and so it's a project, kind of giving you an idea of the, of the size. So this'll be 200, 176, so almost 400 megawatts total, which is, which is really big.
And you think you'll do this project first, the north? Or does it?
Uh, a couple of weeks ago, that's been the way we've been leaning this.
Thinking you'll start here?
Yeah, and working in the, the northwest phase, but I did a project up in Concordia, Kansas, Ponchari Way, and we built two, two, three phases at once, just because we had interest from two different off-taker at the same time, so we just built them up at the same time simultaneously. But we may not do that, though. We may do this one first and this one second, but they're both really clean sites, they have good interconnect, so it's really just a matter of, of who gets it first, basically.
And everything be shipped in by truck or something?
That'll be, the vehicles in this right here, I guarantee, though, cause that's hard to ground, that's sand.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll have different construction challenges up in the northwest and the southeast for sure. To answer your question on the rail, actually, one of my first landowners I worked with, which was Stan Bixler, Clark's dad, he actually mentioned the rails and the rail...
Avar Rail.
Avar Rail, and so typically, if we have access to something like that, sometimes that's something we can put to use.
That would be true.
And so we can rail a lot of that, a lot of those components, so the nacelles, the bases, the blades can be railed in from various locations, and it saves us a lot on transportation costs, and it saves, you know, highways and roads, too, once we get into this...
They can do that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Well, the holdup was, was those things were long enough. They had to special build those cars to handle those, those blades and stuff, that's why I was asking. I didn't know if they ever went ahead and did that, because it takes a special car to do that.
I seen where they had, they didn't actually have one car, but they had part of one strung out.
Okay, okay.
Curves might, that'd be outstanding.
I went, I went down, we were on the train, I wasn't even going there.
Okay, okay, I didn't know if they ever, if they...
But that's something you got to investigate.
We are, yeah. It would be, it would be my hope, not only for just that, but to use that space that's there, it's a good facility that's close, you know.
That was, that was part of the phase.
And Clark and I have already kind of talked about some of the black tops that are in pretty decent shape that we could, and we'll do, we actually, for the road maintenance, we'll do chip seal or we'll do gravel, too, so we will pay for, we fix our...
Sit down, John. I said, put that down.
No kidding.
One more star.
We fix and repair both, basically, so it doesn't matter what it is. If it's, if it's what, if it's the route we want, and typically, you'll see a central location, and a central location for our lay-down yard and construction facilities, so we'll bring in, you know, for a year.
What's that? Your, your lay-down yard, you haven't decided where you're going with it?
No.
I don't know yet.
And we're, we're still siding and looking at where the turbines may or may not go and that kind of thing, so we've got some time. We just started July, so, you know, we're, this is all still, and wind turbines are development, and wind farm development is still a very young project. But, you know, that's the reason why we wanted you guys to see the area, you know, see really that's, we only asked really two things from you guys, is that, no zoning letter, and the other one is just road maintenance, we're asking a few things. But we'll be working with you guys continuously throughout the process, just to make sure you're up to speed on things, and if you have any questions at all, you know, Clark's gonna be working out there for a long time, you know, several years would be my guess, so, me, too. I live in Norman, but I mean, I'm up here, can't come up here anytime I need to, to sit down and talk about things. When we get closer to the construction time, we'll talk about the various road maintenance agreements that we've done with different counties, and y'all just decide how, how you wanna tailor it. So we have, you know, plenty of flexibility on that, for sure.
Well, you said it mattered to go the $100 million in value. I think it's more like almost 300 million in it.
For, that means...
Be on the ad valorem.
For the tax base. The project will be worth, oh my gosh.
Well, I mean, you take those turbines, I mean, at, at 2 million a piece, 130 of them, you're knocking the door at 300 million. Will be your value is what'll go to the...
When they're done and gone, but you're gonna spend a lot more than that.
Well, I, what, all I'm doing is comparing it to what we lost in oil rigs, the drilling rigs compared from 2001, 15 to 2016.
Yeah.
There, we were 20 rigs short in Woods County of those two Januaries, and then that equated to about 126,000 in ad valorem, or we valued them at 100 million, 5 million a piece, 20 rigs and 100 million. But the value of this thing, when completed, we're talking about 300 million.
Four.
Yeah, at 2 million, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so the project...
I mean, I was just trying to get a ballpark because of the loss and, and the gain here.
Yeah, so, so that is correct. So the project itself will be valued at probably closer to, I'm just, I don't, I don't know for sure how big it's gonna be, but ultimately, when we decide on the side, they will be 4, 500-plus million dollars.
Yeah, but I'm just using the, the turbines to compare to the drilling rigs, is what I was getting at.
Can I ask a question? I took a note a while ago, it said 75 to 100 million ad valorem base.
I think that's, that's where I was going back to that, is he was short.
The derivative of what you guys were wanting to know about the derivative of the tax revenue from the county for the project operating in the county.
Well, the, it'll be the assessed value, how you do that.
So the assessed value would be what?
The project will be 4, 5, 600 million dollars.
And that will be, and then you take it ti, that times 12, and that's where you get your assessed value.
That, that's the number I found at her, that I asked.
And, and what, I guess, at the end of the day, those, that 100 million dollars equates to, to 126,000 and some change. So for every 100 million dollars worth of, of stuff we have out here, when you figure that 100 million times 12 times .01, or times...
We can probably, I can probably...
10.56 mil, you come up with 126,000 dollars appears to in tax, actual tax money.
Even it out.
So 126,000 per 100 million.
So it doesn't...
12.6% is the easiest way to figure it, uh, from the value of it. So for each 100 million, we're talking about half a billion dollars in tax annually that this would bring in at, at 500, or 400, between 400 and 500 million in values, okay?
So I'll just give you an idea, so he sent me some numbers, and these are all just ballpark, cause we don't really know what it's ultimately gonna be the size, so we just started. But, so for 100-megawatt project size, over 20-year, on a 20-year average, is 9,500 per megawatt per year, and that's 19 million dollars over for a 20-year period. Well, this project was a 40-year project, so for a 30-year project, which some of them are, for, for a 30-year project, the turbines are $8,000 per megawatt year, and so that's where I came up with the 300, 300 megawatts is the highest given on this chart. This is gonna be 376, and that's why I said probably 100, is 72 million, just flat. So if you tack, and that was 300 megawatts, well, if we do the whole 376, then that's where I kind of got that. And then all these are just ballpark, but just, I just wanted you guys to kind of vision what, you know, will be in the future. And then all these are just ballpark, but just what, I just wanted you guys to kind of vision what, you know, will be in the future, that's over thirty years, now this lease is a forty year lease, so.
They think they're gonna last that long?
They have fifty plus year life. And the thing, thing that you may see is you may see retrofitting of the cells, you may see retrofitting of the guts, you may see retrofitting of the blades, but the base is the base, the tower is the tower, but they may go back and fly new rotors, they may fly, you know, new cells, so, so that's, so it could actually be extended even beyond fifty years uh, with new technology, and technology in this is just really exploding, so.
Does the power go into the grid, or you go on Tennessee Power and Electric and, and that's going to Jay Hop, whatever?
Yes, O G N E down in our interconnect and then, uh, O G N E and then I think the one.
Have you, have you explored more Woods County? I mean, as far as, I mean, however you came up with this grid here, I mean, I'm sure you, with the currents and all that business.
They say it's not windy up here.
I believe. Smiling this one, nope, it's gotta be windy out there. I just wondered how you come up with, I mean, if Woods County as a whole.
Yeah, so, uh, years ago, I had looked up at a project north of Freedom, R C Brown, some of those guys, there were some environmental issues up there, some questions.
Free chicken.
Yeah, so you guys. And so, uh, that project, I know, I don't think that will ever go through, but this, this is very clean from environmental perspective, there's no chicken or anything like that, the wind speeds are good. Another thing they look at is load values and L and P values, which we call local marginal pricing, and basically when you have a lot of oil and gas in an area, that amps up your L and P value, so we have a project up in the Balkan in North Dakota right now, we're doing, called Lindol, and that's because it's right, gonna inject right into all that need and all that load and the Balkan oil shall play. Well, this is a similar situation here because we have all this oil and gas, so you guys have a good pricing scheme, you have very good land, good receptive landowners, uh, good wind speeds, so it's just everything kind of came together, so that's the reason, that's part of the reason what, what you're asking is, we look at those kind of things too.
Right.
And the transmission line that went through.
Because if you don't have, that's right, if you don't have a vehicle, that's right, if you don't have a vehicle.
A big part of you guys' deal though is, if what I'm getting, and I was kind of misunderstanding another day, uh, Clark, is, is you, you're, part of your job is to sell this electricity that you're gonna produce, right? That's a big portion of this deal, rather than, do, do those people that buy, is that just figured in the cost of it, I mean, do they actually pay for this?
Mm-hmm.
Through the, so in other words, it goes hand in hand, they buy electricity to pay for the project essentially.
Right, we do a twenty, typically twenty year P P A, some of the power per square meters will be a lot longer than twenty years, some of them will be, you know, twenty, twenty-five plus.
Well, back on this tax deal, again, you're talking about these megawatts, is there gross production, is there tax on ever, uh, kilowatt you sell through this? Is that what you're talking about a minute ago? That ad valorem I'm talking about is actually value of the, of the, the towers, like, like a building I built, or, you know, is something that's gonna be, uh, have a value, that's the ad valorem I'm talking about, the personal property side of it.
Right.
But last I knew, there was no gross production on wind energy, is there a tax on the electricity that's sold?
Uh, I don't know about that, I don't know what some of the counties are doing in Oklahoma on that, I know some of the projects are just now coming online because they're so new. And some of the projects have been under that exemption deal, you know, for five years, well, that's changing after sixteen, um, so you guys won't see that. Now, there are some older projects like Weatherford, Blue Canyon, down at Lawton, in Apache, some of those have been online enough to know. So my, what you might do, if you guys have some connections down there with some of the county assessors or the M C, county treasurers, so they got some ideas of kind of how they've calculated some of that to see how that's gonna be.
That's, you're doing it by megawatt, and I was, I was figuring by the actual value.
Yeah.
Is what, that's where I was kind of confused, and I don't know if, if that's, which one for sure, probably, you're right, I was just comparing, cause that's how we tax those, those drilling rigs.
Physical asset.
Is, is the actual value, and that's what I've heard, like in Woodward and, and out in Ellis County, that the schools have lots and lots of money because of, and maybe it's off the megawatt deal, I don't know, I'd have to investigate that, but I mean, uh, what I was basing it on was actual value.
So with the school deal and what you're saying, that will ring through here too, so we'll, we'll work with the superintendents to get a, a jurisdiction map of, and I haven't seen one yet, but I'm guessing, like you guys said, it's gonna be here, so there'll be some in their districts, and so they'll get some of that, but I think the run-up is gonna be injected into one of them.
Yeah, it, it, it will, that's, that, that east deal over there could be for, where Carmen de Goma came down, Alva could get a small part, I don't know where that line went down there.
Maybe out in here somewhere.
The Carmen de Goma area, how far south that would go.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be minimal compared to the brown of it.
And you're thinking the, the tires will go all the way to Cleo?
Oh, they won't, well, the river, we drop way off there.
I think Palm Creek over there is out there.
That's why we stop the boundary here, cause the rivers down here and typically our wind speed dropped way off down the river, so.
I may be wrong exactly.
Stay up on the.
It's a considerable amount of money.
Yeah, we typically try to, to take advantage of the high production of the wind speeds up on top, but like, when you get down to these river bottoms here, you start to lose a lot of your wind speeds, so that's why we stop the boundary, you know, can you kind of almost see how we follow?
What's earthquakes gonna do to that, cause that's.
Earthquake central.
That is, right there.
Cause compared to Oklahoma City, that's Fairview right there.
Yeah. Yeah, it's true.
And it's in John's district, uh, north of the rivers where we get the earthquakes, right? There's Alva, yeah, right there.
I just got a notice a little bit ago that they're gonna fix that, the corporation commission of that. The earthquake deal.
Pete, so far we haven't had any issues with our projects, um, we've got the one in Garfield County, we've got two in Garfield County, uh, we got one in O C H County, we've got um, several even, we're working on central Oklahoma, um, we haven't had any issues with earthquakes yet, and I don't have therapy, we have engineers that are looking at that to try to figure out how that affects the foundation, but so far we got.
What is the base of one of those? How big is, is that cement base?
So it depends, these are gonna be, these are gonna be spread footer bases, they're like a pipe plate, whereas some of our projects, we have projects down the Arbuckles on I thirty-five, we have some down at Blue Canyon, no, they're not, the ours down there, but I did those years ago, and they're a rock socket base, like a cup.
Right.
And so they'll blast that limestone and then they'll lay the base in like that, well, these are gonna be spread footer, especially here because of the sand. And the spread footers may even be a little larger down here than up there, um, typically you could see them thirty feet across, um, the, underneath the ground, you know, everything.
Yeah, right.
Many trucks of cement.
A lot, so, so, so sometimes we'll do a batch plant on site, or we'll mix it there, the like in my drift sand project in Rush Springs, we're getting concrete from Marlowe and from, uh, Chickasha, so you know, if there's access, I don't know what you guys have here in Alva for, for concrete, um, is there a leasee up here?
No, any concrete has a plant right here at the south edge of Alva.
Okay, so you, you could see that.
Several, several yards of cement per tower.
That Avar deal with the aggregate, that, well, see, they set up to run the transmission lines, they set a concrete plant up at Avar.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and Martin Marietta brought in the material.
Yeah, so we may do that too, we may consider that, if it's a big enough facility and if we choose to do something up in there with our lay down yard and all that, you could see us do a temporary batch plant there too, so, you know, we have options, the good thing is about this project, in my project I just finished down in Cowal and, and Washdaw County, we didn't have good water, we didn't have a lot of water, so we had to, you know, truck water in or get, there's tons of water there, so I'm not too worried if we have to do a central facility here, or a central facility there of being able to find good adequate water, so that's always a big concern though, is, cause there's a lot of concrete.
Right.
You got concrete, you got sand, and you got water, and earthquakes, don't forget that.
No free chickens.
Yeah, no, no chickens, so that's good, yeah, lots of concrete, um, the good thing about this, and I'm from, like I said, we farm out Frederick Altis area, we've been really dry down there, and so the thing I like about wind energy, uh, is it doesn't use any water, it produces power, so once we mix this concrete and walk away, and then produce power for hopefully more than fifty years without, without any water use, which is a good thing.
Have you had any, not environmental, but ergonomic, I mean, like, or, like, people problems, too loud, scared my cows.
Ugly, ugly horizon.
I just wondered if there was any, you know.
The cows typically lay in the shade of the turbines.
Right.
And they'll lay in a line, and then after about an hour, they get up and move to the next spot, uh, it's really kind of comical, but, uh, no, they, if one is making noise or something mechanically wrong with it, in the.
Couple thirty odd six shells inside.
Yeah, maybe a hole in it or something, if, if there's, if that's going on, your technicians would need to know and correct it, they're not supposed to make, they're not supposed to sound.
I didn't know.
Yeah, but, but it is probably all tied together that you'll know when rotor fifty-six is down, cause it's, it's telling you, it's, you know.
So we'll have, we'll have a little O and M facility where the permanent employees will work, and they'll have a skating system set up that now monitors each machine, each machine is a smart machine, so they know if a wind is a true sustainable wind or front, and they'll correct themselves to orient with that, they, they have a shut, shut in or shut down speed where they stall at over fifty miles an hour, so they can't go too fast.
Really?
They, they are all smart computers, each one, so they know when the wind speeds are getting too high and it's becoming volatile and in danger, so they'll shut down.
What's your biggest complaint?
What's the biggest complaint?
Winter time.
Oh, uh, so typically, typically the, the, when they feel the imbalance of ice collecting, the, the blades actually pitch, I don't know if you guys knew that, but the blades, you know, it's like putting your hand out a car window when you're going down the street and you do that, you know, so the blades will pitch, and then they'll stall and let the ice collect, and then the sun will bake them off and fall off before they, they won't.
On that cattle land in the jail.
Yeah. Yeah.
She better get up.
They better get up. Train them better than that.
Yeah, she better get up, so that, so that's kind of the, the thing with, if they feel like there's something going on with the rotor or the blade, they'll, the ice will, they'll start to shut themselves down. So they're, they're pretty neat machine, they, they do some pretty amazing stuff, they're, produce a lot of power too, especially with the new technologies, so.
I think you ought to try to get started next week.
Yeah, well.
Looks like a good deal to me.
We were down, uh, down, I flew out to Atlanta two weeks ago, I was telling Clark and had a lot of interest from a group out there, and there's a lot of interest from O G N E, cause they're having to retire a lot of their coal plants or, or put scrubbers on, it's been a lot of money, so there's interest from O G N E, Western Farmers, A U P, G R D A, I mean, list goes on and on, and wind is so cheap now, utilities can't afford not to participate in it.
It has cheapened up, it was higher than the other, but it's cheapened up because of the E P A, the regulations on the others, or what?
It's just gotten cheap because of demand.
Technology.
Kind of like LED light bulbs and flat screen D V's, it's just sixty percent reduction in the last ten years in cost.
Okay.
So now it's becoming so cheap for utilities and off takers, they can't afford not to buy it, and the, the beauty of wind for them is it's flat, so they don't have to produce anything, they don't have to drill for anything, they don't have to truck anything, it just produces power once they're up and going, so they like it cause it's a flat cost, they know what they're getting, we know what we're getting, you guys as a county, elected officials know that you're gonna get this because we have a twenty year P P A that gives everybody comfort to know this isn't just a merchant deal or we're selling it day by day on the market or something like.
I think you need to recheck that wind, I think it's more wind with county factories.
So you've got.
It feels like it anyway, doesn't it?
You've got the deal, uh, north of Freedom, this is a, that's a great feature, but the free chicken deal is kind of in limbo, they've been delisted, but, you know, if they get listed again.
We want east of the area, it's still pretty windy.
Allen is ready up here, it's really taking the tree.
Yeah, there's actually some pretty decent stuff around Alva, um, uh, you get over, on over towards the county line and you get into salt plains.
It's flat.
We're in your trouble, the reds.
Yeah, which becomes, we, we are, our biometric directors would be like, no, we gotta stay away, so we, we just try to be smart up front to prevent those problems later on, so we try to foresee, okay, well, that'll be a potential issue that people aren't gonna be happy with, so we just choose not to go there, and so like, you won't ever see anything around, you know, the refuge.
Where you got that airbase out there too, I think that'd be a flow zone for them too, but.
Yeah, so there's, there's those setbacks and, you know, those, that kind of stuff too, like the Ants Air Force Base, you know, if there's little air force here or there, we have to stay away from those, you know, so typically.
Well, I like your church answers, taking care of the roads and things like that.
Yeah, we, we wanna make sure you guys, and I would recommend, uh, and that's just a few example letters, we've built lots of projects in Oklahoma, um, so if you have any questions, you know, don't ask, call those other commissioners, talk to them about the relationships that we've had with them and the work we've done, and we try to do, you know, everything that they're ever gonna do, so I would encourage you to call them if you have any questions about, since we dig into the R M A and all that, you know, I'll get that to you guys so you can look at it, but.
Is the clean line project still a go?
Yeah, I think they're still moving forward, um, as far as I know, and that, that could potentially bring more, you know, wind generation, uh, there's actually some interest in solar now in Oklahoma, I've got two projects in southwest Oklahoma that I did, um, this area is a pretty decent solar resource, but it's an excellent wind resource. So with that new line and other new transmission upgrades, O G N E's doing more upgrades up here, you're gonna see some of this congestion get lowered and more interest in big wind projects or solar or things like that, so, so yeah, I think as far as I know, it's still going on.
Okay, well, I, I didn't know it's been a long work in progress.
Well, I know you guys are busy, I've talked way too much, I appreciate.
Thank you very much.
This is my card, I live in Norman and Clark's here too, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, and, uh, that letter is just, y'all can keep that letter, and that's what we'll, if you guys wouldn't, wouldn't mind, you know, drafting something like that, we can, um, and we'll need, like the other commissioners, we'll need all three of y'all signatures on it, and y'all can, uh, email me that.
We got another card by the kids.
The, uh, Jennifer Dean, her name is on the.
Yeah, on that letter.
One of them, her address, she's our director of our meeting, so the original letter would go to her.
When, when do you, when would you like to have this?
Uh, just whenever you guys want, I'm not needing, I mean, I don't need it next week or anything like that, just if you guys wanna draft it, if you want me to look at it, but there's different wording in all of them, so you can tailor it however you want to, and then y'all can, um, just mail her the original and she can scan me a copy in.
Okay.
You not having that letter ain't gonna slow your.
No, no, but we just, we just, you know, we just like it to, for us to know that we're working in good faith with you guys and working with you up front on the road issues and that kind of thing, so that's why we asked for the letter, just for y'all to clarify, or, you know, confirm, which we already know, but the allaglands, there's no zoning, you know, and.
In the flood plain area, you know, you know, it's not a flood plain you're going.
Yeah, we, we'll, we will not get down into the flood plains, and that's why, and y'all asked the earlier, this area, Clark and I talked about that a little bit, it gets a little bit low in there, and so, you know, we probably would try to avoid those areas, but, but we wanna make sure that anything that's flood prone or sensitive environmentally, or especially wetland, we just.
No wetlands.
And then, so that would be the river, obviously, some of these little creeks and stuff running here, they get a little bit low and maybe here or there, so we try to minimize the impact of those areas if we can.
Well, I just speak for myself, but the only thing I see on here is there could be some landscaping requirements in my district. On the county roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and that, it says that we don't have any, but I might have some.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I got you, I got you, so yeah, there's, there's no hurry on that, I just brought that for an example, but in the next week or two or three, if y'all get around to it, and, um, I'd just say just send the original to Jenny Dean at the trade wind, and then, uh, she'll scan a copy in to me, so. Okay, well, y'all gotta meet.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it, nice to meet you guys.
Appreciate y'all coming.
Thanks for your time. Clark, shit, nice to meet you all, if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you for coming up.
Yep.
See you, buddy.
See you guys, John. I'll leave that hat on for you there if you want to keep it.
I'm rolling up.
Keep it locked up. Keep it locked up for, thank you guys.
You bet. Okay, number seven, discussion possible action regarding the following permits, Brickman Fastline, Tetra Tech, Power Drilling and Sim Gas.
Three and three.
I've got one for Tetra that'll make the motion to approve for D two, it is a produced water line. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've got, uh, two, uh, one for Sim Gas and one for Brickman Fastline, make that motion.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, all right, number eight, discussion possible action regarding the following flood plain permit for one oak. Are they good, Foster?
Yes, they're good, they're just putting a replacement of pipeline over by Avar, they go under the railroad tracks, so no big deal.
Okay, I'll make the motion we approve.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, approved, disapproved monthly reports for the following assessor's office, county clerk, court clerk, election board, health department, sheriff's office and treasurer's office.
Are they all there, Shelley?
Well, no, you should have signed here and Randy should.
The administrator signs up here.
I'll sign up here.
Yeah, you also sign there.
Okay, that's fine, either get, we can read.
That's fine, it'll fine, I'll sign it.
Put your John Henry on it for your stamp.
Are any of them?
You gotta make an X for me and then I'll sign it in the wrong place anyway.
Are all the reports in, Shelley, what are they, are they all?
Yes, they are all here.
Sheriff's office?
Yep.
Wow, wow.
I'll make that motion that we approve them monthly reports for all of them.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
All of the sheriff's lights, well, that's much, I just slept it as is, get them all on there, worked out pretty good.
Number ten, discussion possible action regarding monthly appropriations. Number ten, discussion, possible action regarding monthly appropriations. Okay. Well, I'll make the motion to approve these appropriations.
I'll second it.
On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's number, uh.
Eighteen, we're gonna move to eighteen. And that is introduction of Susan Holliday, the new OSU Extension Educator, F C S four H. You're up.
Okay, well, I would like to introduce you to Susan Holliday, David Hamel.
It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
John's smiling.
All right, nice to meet you.
And I'm Randy. We've already met.
Susan's, uh, lived here in Alva since two thousand and nine. She's got a family consumer science degree from Kentucky. And so she's well qualified and.
Kentucky?
Kentucky, yes.
That's right. Long way away.
Yes.
We conducted interviews the, uh, fifth of February and, uh, Susan was selected and, uh, started February twenty-ninth and we're thrilled to have her onboard.
Did they tell you how tough group of ours work with them or?
They said you were wonderful.
Thank you, Greg.
We ain't pleased.
Welcome aboard. We're glad.
Thank you.
Tickle to have you, actually.
Great.
Maybe not as glad as Greg, but we are glad.
I'm really glad to be here too, so.
You, you have a great group of people to work with, Greg and, and all the extension ladies and four H groups. Welcome to Woods County.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Now, the commissioners are a little city. I don't know about them. But the newspaper, the newspaper is really friendly. Well, I hope you have a long stay.
I hope so too.
Now, you have, you, you have kids here?
I have one daughter. She's, uh, in, in college, uh, right now and, um, it's just my husband and I. She has her own place, uh, with lots of animals, but, uh, just one daughter.
That's good that they have their own place.
Yes.
We've scheduled Jim Rhodes, our district four H specialist to come in and then do some training and then, uh, Cindy Connor, our district, uh, F C S educator or district supervisor will be in to, to, to help her kind of get started in some of the extension kinds of things. So we're working on those kinds of things. Getting her to four H meetings and things like that to get her introduced to the kids in the county and the extension side of things that we do. She's, she's plugged into the community, but maybe not all of the extension stuff, so we're working on that.
Will you be wired direct for long, not just for?
She's already got Ethan's number in her, uh, in her cell phone, so we're well on the way there.
If you got Greg's number and Ethan's number, you're good to go.
That's all I mean. Okay, good.
You're good to go.
Thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks. Thanks.
Was there any issues on that other?
Um, we haven't got to it yet, but we're getting close to it. If you wanna wait around just a few minutes.
I can do that.
Okay, all right.
We'll get it next.
That's number fourteen.
Okay, we'll jump to fourteen, discussion, possible action regarding the transfer appropriations from the account, general fund account, OSU Extension Capital Outlay Sales Tax to the OSU Extension Personal Service Sales Tax in the amount of five thousand. Just a transfer?
Do it a transfer of appropriations, yes.
I'll move that we make that transfer.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are done with that.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Now we'll move back up to eleven, discussion, possible action regarding the Little Legal Chief Creek Bridge Title Sheets.
Okay, we got the great big one. All signed.
Right, this is, it's in district two. This is a good job they're signing, Melvin.
And then we have a small one we have to sign too.
New bridge?
Yeah.
There it is.
It's supposed to happen. Got to wait till after the test team to do it.
Yeah.
Been for a lifetime notice, you know?
What's a title sheet?
It is essentially is.
Start the process.
Yeah, it's showing where, where it is, the construction sheets, the, I guess I can look at it, the survey data.
Environmental studies.
All the preliminary stuff.
Combination of all of that.
Yeah.
Here's what we're, here's our project.
It, it gets your elevation of your bridge and, uh, what they're gonna do, the sidewall and the, the ditches and that kind of stuff. Here, there's two that you guys need to sign.
Okay, so you frisked it?
Yeah, did I, did I not make the motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number twelve, discussion, possible action regarding surplus to Genocca, Canocchia, Malota.
Manolta.
Manolta, copier ID number G two thirteen dash ten for count, uh, general government.
I'll, I'll make the motion we junk it.
Second.
Conca Manolta.
On favor?
Aye.
Randy, you second it?
Yeah.
Aye.
You wanna copy of the sign sheet?
No.
Okay.
Number thirteen, discussion, possible action regarding surplus of two thousand and four Crown Victoria ID number B three three nine dash fifteen for the sheriff's office.
I'll move that we surplus car for the sheriff's office.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number fifteen, discussion, possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations, four thousand dollars from the Highway Fund Account, Highway District One M and O to the Highway Personal Service in the amount of twenty-five hundred and fifteen hundred to withholding account. Highway District Two M and O to the Highway Personal Service in the amount of twenty-five hundred and fifteen hundred to withholding account. Uh, what that amounts to is we've created a new account to pay the joint, uh, uh, employee that David and I hired for the signs and whatever.
I'll make that motion.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
This is me.
Yep.
Number sixteen, discuss, discussion, possible action regarding the purchase of three brooms and one packer from Warren Cat. What that amounted to Lynn is we sold some joint equipment in the way of the lay down machine, the, another small packer. We're in the process of selling and we're, I guess we sold the broom this weekend. I don't know how it did.
I haven't heard.
At the auction, but we sold those and so this way each, each district has its own packer and own broom. So when we're patching black topses is the issue, it becomes, we have one broom and two packers countywide that we all join, uh, own jointly and we just essentially got a broom and a packer at each shed. So it, the issue is when we go to, they have a blacktop, a, a batch plant set up somewhere around here close. We all decide to patch blacktop at the same time, well.
We don't have enough equipment to go around.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Somebody has to wait and then get the batch plant in here. I'll look.
So that's, that's what we did. And, uh, we, we essentially just, uh, reinvested that money from the sales of the other stuff. Where all do we need to sign? Each district separately.
On that, Randy?
Probably, yeah.
Cause you're sharing it, right? So you all three probably.
I'll make the motion.
Just stand there and sign.
Accept the purchase of the brooms and the packers, Warren Cat.
Well, they've got these all, okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Well.
I love it when they send all this and they don't tell me what to do.
All their stickies in there for each.
Oh, okay. Where you're sharing them, right?
Well, essentially they're, they're gonna be one at each shed, so, and they've got them listed as D one, two and three. I don't know if that, does that.
Guys did it. They'd be sharing buying it, right?
Yeah, we all of them.
Yeah.
So they're all gonna have to be listed as on inventories, one, two and three, just like the others are.
Of course, I think this is for Warren Cat, so.
Okay.
And David, that, that's all to D one. This is to D two. And this one is the only one that's joined. The pack.
Didn't do it.
Huh?
Only didn't buy them, it's on sale.
What do we need to do now?
I mean, I thought you guys probably can box them together, all of them. Did you not?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, I guess all I'm taking this is, I guess we can list them how each, these are gonna be the, I guess the brooms are at each shed. Then we got three brooms for Warren Cat to.
No, they can be located at each, yeah, one at each shed, but we still have to, when we inventory them.
Yeah, but we can do that differently. They're, they made out a broom to each sheds. I guess, is it okay for us to sign these?
I guess.
Okay.
I don't know, probably. I mean, I could.
Individual, I don't think.
Probably could have bought them together.
They didn't.
So do we need to sign these or?
Well, they're confused.
They're sharing it.
They bought them all, they didn't buy them separately.
Okay, never mind then.
So sign right here.
Just sign right there.
Which one? Where it says acknowledgement and acceptance of terms.
Okay.
That it?
I think so.
I don't know.
Well.
I didn't get these papers till, for me, I don't know.
Looks like four places you need to sign.
On the back, on right here.
Yeah, but.
Yeah. Looks like, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now this one, we could stamp it on the back and all three of it could sign it if you want.
That'll work.
You know, that way.
Do we sign that problem, Ben?
Yeah.
That's the one you stamped?
Yeah. It's on the side, on the back side, yep. Yeah, okay.
Did Shelley hang on there, Brooke?
What do you want, is, what do you want to know?
Our broom?
What about it?
Is it sold? Was it this last weekend?
Guy from Harper County called me about it.
Harper County?
No, it's this weekend.
Oh, it's this coming weekend?
Yeah, the eleventh and twelfth.
Oh.
There you go.
Guy from Logan County called me about it. So here we have it.
Got an option.
Just that one, Phil?
No, there was two. I don't know if she intended for there to be two, but then she did it. I signed both places. Now down to seventeen, discussion, possible action regarding easement for Jackass Ridge Road located in section thirty-four twenty-nine North Range eighteen West. Okay, that is out in our district and what that is, is Katie Blanc going to her house. Got easements from landowners to go through there to make it a county road down to her house. We got the easements on file and Ben, that wasn't. She, uh, that's what she wants to name that road going to her house, so.
Is that a motion?
Yes. On favor?
Aye.
Wouldn't forget that where you live, that road down.
That's one of her favorite words in history, I think.
You can be right.
We did her wedding and the invitation had Jackass Ridge.
Yeah. That's her deal.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, number nineteen, any new business?
I know of any none.
Nope.
Okay, number twenty, approved, disapproved blanket purchase orders.
I move that we approve the blanket purchase orders.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, you're up. Motion to adjourn.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Aye.
Aye.